A partly sunny afternoon with high temperatures in the low.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Public Works Finance Committee of the Moscow City Council. Regular meeting on January 23rd, 2017. Attending the meeting this afternoon is Walter Steed, John Weber, and Bill Bell, now representing the city staff. The first item on our.
I think the first item we need, Mr. Chairman, is to amend the agenda to add item seven, which is a request for assignment of Cardinal GS Stormwater Utility Study Agreement to Aspect Consulting. This was inadvertently left off the agenda when it was created last Friday due to a computer system problem.
Okay. Thank you for so moving.
I'll second that.
Okay. I think we're all in favor of adding that. It was added to the amended agenda already on the end. So, thank you, Mr. Steed. That'll be added to the agenda. The first item listed on the agenda is the approval of Public Works Finance Committee January 9th, 2017 minutes. Entertain a motion to approve those?
I wasn't here. So, it's gonna have to be up to you, too.
The two of us, I guess.
I bet we can do it.
We can say that we approve those. John's abstaining. Second item on our agenda today is the well number 10, Phase 2 Professional Services Agreement for Design and Construction Management. And Kevin Lilly's gonna step in and tell us all about that.
Yep. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Kevin.
Back in, let's see, last summer, we drilled new well 10. That was completed, and it's intended to connect to our 16-inch water main that's in Eighth Street currently and serve running to the east. In fact, we also have a project coming out this summer that will connect that 16-inch main to the line out of well nine. But this agreement is for design and construction of the remainder of the work needed to get that well online.
Construction management.
Yes, sorry. Thank you, Walter. We did a competitive request for qualifications process, which JUB came out on top of that. We negotiated an agreement. It is in the amount of $437,850 for the design and construction management of the project. We are hoping to get them going soon and have the well online as soon as possible, but at the latest, it should be early 2019. The estimated construction cost, this is very rough at this point. They've done basically no design work, just basing it on previous projects. One, most recently, in Lewiston, it was $2.3 million. So, the request is for you to approve this agreement through the committee and carry it on through council for authorization of the mayor's signature.
Okay. Mr. Steed?
Admittedly, I blinked when I saw the price of his contract, but called Kevin earlier today and asked him what was the construction estimate for it, and so it does not appear to be out of line based upon the price of the construction. I don't have any other questions. I would move to approve it and send it forward to the consent agenda.
I would second that. Same concerns. And it appears to be within the norm, I guess you would say, for this type of project and the amount of money the city's gonna have to spend, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Not cheap.
Yeah, it's not inexpensive. But it will add a lot to our pumping capability, and it's gonna be a great addition to the water system, so I think we're all in agreement. We could move this forward to the consent agenda.
Just one further question. Somebody asked me last week about the expected production, and I told him that it was at least 300 gallons a minute higher than we expected. Is that, was that an accurate statement that I gave this person?
I'm not su-- we were counting on about 2,500, which is what we plan to pump it at for now. It's what we have the rights for. During the testing, they thought it could go upwards of 3,000, 32, 33, if need be.
Okay.
So, we are.
I was somewhat accurate.
More like 700 more than the low-end estimate there. Excellent. Okay.
Thanks, Kevin. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your report, Kevin. Item three on today's agenda is the Eighth Street right-of-way vacation. There's a piece of Eighth Street that needs to be vacated, and Les McDonald's gonna tell us about that and what the background is on that. Good afternoon, Les.
Not anticipating going into a lot of detail here because the right-of-way vacation process requires a public hearing. And so typically, what we've done historically in these situations is come to the committee and let you know that we've received a request for a vacation and that we will be scheduling a public hearing typically about 30 days out. In this case, we're looking at, I believe, the 21st of February, so in that range of about a month. And then after today's session, we would start the advertisement for the public hearing process. We wanna make sure that folks have notice of what's coming, what's being proposed, and their opportunity to come comment during the public hearing process about the requested vacation. And then, of course, council would take testimony and deliberate how they would like to proceed. But to give you a quick update on what this is about, we have received a request. This is in the area of Eighth Street and Harrison. Just to help orient you here, here's Eighth Street. Harrison is in this area, and Logan to this side. This is the area itself. The request is actually affiliated, or coming from the owner of this property, so it's really affiliated with the frontage of this parcel along Eighth Street itself. Just to give you a little quick overview from the aerial, and I think I zoomed in a bit here. So, this is the Harrison Street, Eighth Street area here. We currently have about 80 feet, or we do have 80 feet of right-of-way that's existing out there today. The parcel that's being requested for vacation is a 10-foot wide segment that runs from the Harrison Street right-of-way line to the right-of-way line of the alley, so essentially along the entire length of this 503 Eighth Street parcel on the Eighth Street frontage. So, that's the area in question. The request has been made by that property owner, and just wanted to let you know that this is coming about a month out. Typically, in right-of-way vacation processes, all the testimony that you receive because of the public hearing has to be through that hearing process. And so that's why we're a little cautious about how much we convey here, since the full council's not privy to everything we're discussing right now, other than through minutes.
On the packet, in the packet, there's a little map similar to this, and it shows this piece of property on 503 East Eighth Street and an identical property right next door to it. What's the number of that? Is that 506 or 50?
Yeah, 505.
The other side of the alley?
So, this one, so here's 503. So, you're looking at this one, 803?
Yeah, it must be 803, then.
803 Logan, I guess.
I believe so, yes. Logan, frontage, right.
So, the city owns right-of-way in front of, across this Eighth Street, the same width all the way across, but the owner of the 503 wants us to vacate that?
Yes. That's the request.
10 feet.
10 feet. Yes. Yes. That's the request. So, that's what will come before you in the public hearing process, is that request.
And I suppose we don't need the details on what is reasoning of his request is at this point?
We will certainly go through all of that during the public hearing process. They will be there to testify about their request. We will let you know what we know about the origins of the right-of-way, requests from franchise utilities about easements, those types of things that are typically addressed during these right-of-way vacation hearings.
So, this is more of, what we're doing today is just for your information?
Yeah, we typically want to bring it to the committee first because we have a committee-council cycle, and so this is the step of, you know, committee first. We would push it out to 30 days roughly, so we have enough time for the public notice process for a public hearing, so. Yeah, it's not really intended that we spend much, you know, a lot of detail here because that's really what should be occurring during the public hearing testimony portion.
Well, I could see no reason why we shouldn't move forward with presenting it for a public hearing.
Yeah, I'm good.
And I would think that would be a regular agenda item.
Yes.
Because there'll be a presentation based on that, so. Everybody in favor of that?
Do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Les. So, that'll be for the February 21st council meeting of 2017. Number four on the agenda today is the Sixth and Jackson Turn Lane MOA. Been working on this for a while. We've had financing and everything go through, and it's been changed around due to the URA situation there on the corner, and now it's coming back to light, so glad to see it.
It is. Yes, thank you. There are actually two items on the agenda today. This one, which addresses the proposed memorandum of agreement between the city of Moscow and the Urban Renewal Agency. And then subsequent to this will be a right-of-way dedication acceptance item, and they're interrelated, as you would expect. And so the PowerPoint that I've got here really is going to address both, so we can kinda walk through a little bit of the history of what this is about, so that then there's a good understanding as to why the need for the MOA and then why the need for the right-of-way that goes along next. So, just to walk you through this, those that have a good memory will recall this conversation about two years ago now, almost two and a half, where we first started looking at this intersection. This is the Urban Rural District property here, and this is Sixth Street and Jackson Street intersection. You'll see there's no building here yet in this photo. It's where the Jimmy Johns is now located. And what we were looking at at the time.
The parking lot.
Yeah, the parking lot. Was the fact that, as it still exists today, we have an eastbound through lane that's here, where the red arrow is shown, and a westbound left turn lane that is here with this arrow, where they're directly opposite each other. And the conflicts that that can create, you know, for potential head-on concern, because there is a need for, well, let me just come back to that in just a second. The rest of the movements that happen here is we do have a right turn pocket in this area, and then about a five-foot bike lane that exists between the two eastbound lanes. So, the right-turning traffic tends to make the swing here if they're staying in the lane. It's a bit of green dash. Sometimes they like to swing further over because they're going onto Troy, and they gotta be in the far lane, so sometimes they swing a little further out. At the same time, the eastbound traffic is having to make a fairly substantial transition, essentially making a lane change width across the distance of the intersection itself. So, that's a pretty sharp transition for people to make. And then what happens is we've got a bike lane that's trying to fit right in between the two, and the squeeze that also happens there. So, combination of having opposing lanes of traffic requiring a sharp transition from a through lane here to a through lane on the east side of the intersection, bikes that need to fit within that area, and then vehicles here that don't always turn as sharp as they should and perhaps come further out, just creates a lot of conflict here. So, what was proposed and what we've been pursuing ever since is revamping the intersection. We looked at a couple of options. This is generally the one that we settled on, which would push the curb line further to the south and allow us to then start a transition for this eastbound lane that would then more correctly line up across the intersection with the eastbound lane to the east of the highway. By doing that, then we also shift the bike lane over into a nice straight shot all the way through and then kick that right turn lane further out. You can see then there in the green dash, the alignment for the vehicles heading eastbound, the bike lane that is a nice parallel to it, and then a turn lane out of there. It should reduce the conflict here a little bit in terms of, you know, vehicles tending to come together in the bike lane, also reduce the potential for any kind of head-on interactions between the opposing directions of flow. So, that was the concept that we prepared back then. We had this little sketch that said, okay, this is roughly what it might look like. So, again, you have a center island out here painted, 12-foot lane. We've got a bike lane through here, a right turn pocket, and then I think we had a 10-foot sidewalk, it looks like, in there with the street trees and all those good things coming around the corner. And you can see here, we're just kinda tapered off to nothing. I mean, we showed what it might someday do, but really, it was not that much a part of the discussion at the time. And just a quick blow-up of that area. But we were thinking at the time that that curb line would come out and be consistent with what we had done up at the EMSI frontage, so extension a little bit further out to provide wider sidewalk opportunities. And again, just showing how that fits together. So, this is a more current drawing, and this is actually in your packet as part of the MOA, that shows the type of improvement that we're now considering. So, it's following the same concepts where we'd have that nice striped center island. We'd bring that travel lane a little bit to the south and line it up across the intersection, bike lane coming all the way through, nice right turn pocket here, kicking out far enough so that we take people into that westerly, southbound lane. But instead of just carrying that curb line all the way south, we actually modified to include parking right in this area. In order to do that, we would need some additional right-of-way from the URA parcel along the west side of Jackson to then go along with the right-of-way that we originally talked about along the north side of the URA parcel on Sixth Street. So, the two things that will be before you today have to do with how do we construct this project, the MOA, and then the right-of-way necessary to allow us the room for construction. So, the memorandum of understanding essentially addresses the dedication of right-of-way to the city in both frontages, so these properties here along Sixth Street and along the west side of the Jackson corridor. It also addresses then the expenditures for the project and who has what responsibilities. So, the URA dedicates the land. There's a value associated with that. The URA also participates in the costs associated with undergrounding power, things of that nature, whereas the city will be the project manager and will actually construct the improvements, really on both frontages, okay? With the city paying the frontage improvement costs in this area along Sixth Street and the URA paying the frontage improvement costs along the Jackson Street side. I think that pretty much covers it. So, that's generally what's in the memorandum of agreement, outlining all those roles and responsibilities and the identifying the dedication. And then the next agenda item is the actual dedication acceptance by the city. So, that'll turn out. Answer any questions you might have.
Les, is your right turn lane eastbound on Sixth as long as it currently is?
I'm not sure I know the answer to that. I believe it's... I believe so. Part of what makes it a little interesting to answer that question is when you look here, the bike lane ends, and then it's this dash line. That's a transition zone, right, for the vehicles that are in the lane to cross over the bike lane and into what is the beginning of the turn pocket. So, really, if you look at that as the beginning of the turn pocket, we're, what, two, three-car widths east of the alley?
Right to that white car.
Right over that white car. See if it shows up later. About, you know, two, three-car widths east of that alley, and when you get to, does this one show that? Actually, that is still there. So, actually, yeah, I think we're just about the same, it looks like, because the alley's there. Same underlying photo, so, yeah.
Okay. I don't know whether this, Les, is your main, but where we've got, or where you guys have got the yellow lines separating right there. Are those intended to just be painted lines?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, at this point, we didn't see any reason to go beyond that. You know, anytime we put something in the middle of the road, other than paint, plow becomes more challenging. So, if paint is sufficient, then that's what we prefer to place.
And John, trucks making that turn off of southbound and westbound.
Right.
May need that for their swing.
That's all I was thinking about was if they would have the ability to swing a little bit wider and not clip the corner the way they do now.
Right.
And if.
This will help that situation, and this is similar to what we see out here at Third and Jackson.
Yeah.
We've got that striped island in the middle. The same concept.
Yeah. Sounds good to me.
Yeah, the whole thing is long, long awaited.
We've been going over this at Urban Renewal for quite some time, as Art is back there nodding his head, and it's been a well-thought-out process, a fairly long process, and if we can get started moving on it, we can eventually get that piece of property sold and another business with some apartments above put in there, and it'll help the downtown, help the whole town.
Les, what, remind me what the current budgeting is to build this?
Well, I'm gonna stretch my memory today. The east-west portion, the Sixth Street portion, I believe we're in the 280 range, if I remember correctly. But I do not recall offhand the Jackson Street frontage. Bill, might be able to pull that up?
And are those funds in the current budget?
They are. The amount that was anticipated for the Sixth Street portion was budgeted, and then we actually supplemented that a little bit this year in the '17 fiscal year. And so, there was enough based on the estimates that we had developed. I would have to honestly go back and look specifically what the numbers were, but, yeah, based on the numbers that we had in our estimates and then with some supplement this year just for price escalation, it should be there for Sixth Street. And then the Jackson Street side, of course, is the URA's participation.
If I may, the estimates were prepared about two years ago now. Well, I guess, yeah, about in February of 2015, there was an estimate prepared for the project, including Sixth and Jackson Street frontages at $207,000. The Sixth Street portion was $132,000, and the Jackson Street frontage was $75,000. There's an additional $75,000 of other underground utility expenses beyond this project footprint. There are some underground paths that we need to bore to bring that utility fully underground, as well as the expense related to a Vista coming back and constructing that utility underground once the pathways are completed.
You had a whole problem. Has that been resolved?
That was part of the undergrounding operation.
Correct. So, there is another $75,000 that is not in that $207,000 amount, and that is also being covered by the agency. So, the agency has budgeted approximately $150,000 for this project, $75,000 for the Jackson Street frontage, and $75,000 for the utility underground work.
That's where the 280 number was in my head.
And the timetable?
Anticipation construction this summer.
Okay. I'm good.
Yeah, I remember this as being approved and financing was done for it, and then was, we voted to delay it in order to help with the financing situation on the lot inside the URA, to facilitate that. And as a result of that, this parking along Jackson Street has emerged, and I think that's a good improvement, so that's unintended positive consequence of the delay. So, I think we're all in agreement that we should move forward with both of these, but we probably should identify them one at a time.
Sure.
For purposes of this, the recommendation of the MOA on the first item on the agenda, the item number four. Everyone's in favor of that?
Yeah.
And item number five, the Sixth Street right-of-way dedication acceptance. Everybody's good with that for moving that along?
No, we're gonna have to, especially on the number five, that's gonna have to go to a public hearing on?
No, it's simply acknowledgement of a dedication of property to the city for right-of-way and the city's acceptance of that, so.
Okay, so if we go the other way, that's when we need the?
Correct.
Yeah, to vacate it, once it's received, yes.
Thanks.
I would probably recommend the MOA could certainly go on the consent agenda, and then maybe the acceptance of the dedication beyond the regular agenda item.
That's, that would seem to.
It's a matter of whether or not you wanna expose this presentation to the public or not, I think, to tell people what we're fixing to tear up out there.
Well, I think in the interest of transparency, that's how it should be done.
And I'm sure Les could include the presentation on the project itself for the dedication acceptance item.
Yeah. Since there have been changes made since the original.
Yeah, we can certainly go through this at the council if you'd like.
It's a fairly concise thing.
Okay. All right.
Okay. So, MOA consent and dedication on the regular agenda.
Correct. All right. Thank you, Les. Item number six says, South Gate Third Edition subdivision request for waiver of public improvements. Mike Ray's gonna tell us about this stairway. Seems very similar to another stairway we saw earlier in the same area.
Yeah. Afternoon, gentlemen. So, before you today, we have a request on behalf of Michael, Mr. Michael Salisbury. He's the developer of South Gate Third Edition for a waiver of public improvements for a pedestrian path that's required as original condition of approval of South Gate Third Edition. So, just so you're familiar with the subdivision, it's outlined in red, located in the area of the White Avenue Roundabout. The surrounding area is predominantly single-family residential, includes South Gate Second Edition to the west there, and you have the city limits boundary, which borders the eastern portion of this subdivision. Originally divided into about three phases, the developers chosen to proceed with phase number three first, and so they've already put in the infrastructure and started developing lots within that phase. Now, they're moving on to phase one of the subdivision plat, and so that would be that first portion on your screen there. So, as part of the original approval, what the conditions were, various pedestrian pathways, utility easements throughout the subdivision. You have about three of them that were accessed via Hampton Court, two that are already constructed that were intended to provide access to Flomer as well as Lundquist, and so these are already constructed. So, as part of, originally was approved by council on March 3rd, 2008 with those conditions. There was a previous waiver request, and that happened September 8th, 2015. The council ultimately approved, and that was for the pedestrian path that was highlighted in red here. I think with the original discussion in March 3rd, 2008, the intent was more of a direct route to the park property, so up on Hampton Court. There was some discussion by council of putting this pedestrian pathway easement here, but there's a large number of stairs that would be required because the hill drops off there. So, it ultimately ended up being proposed here on that western portion. The applicant had gone through the waiver request, and like I mentioned, in 2015. As part of that, there was two parts. You had pathway number one, just to waive this requirement to construct that. There was a request on this pathway here in order to put that in after homes are constructed within that portion of the subdivision. Council denied that request and required the pathway to put in prior to building permits to be issued within the subdivision, but council did approve the waiver of this pedestrian pathway that I've got shown in red there. And the reason behind that was just the, you know, there was only really a substantial distance within the properties along the Hampton Court cul-de-sac, and so that would, you know, only cut down the travel distance to the park by a little bit, only for these portions of properties here. And so, council ultimately approved that. Now that they're moving on to phase one of the subdivision, the developer has requested that the pathway that's intended to go from Cassaford down to Chelsea Court, to have that be waived as one of the requirements. And so, that's the current proposal. This is a.
Go back one moment, if you would. The two green ones are installed?
Two greens ones, yeah, correct. Yep, correct.
And the red one is not gonna exist, so we, because we left that?
Yeah, the council, yeah, approved that waiver in 2015, so that one will not be constructed. So, we're just looking at the blue pathway on your screen. The intention was to access Milton Arthur Park, which is about a three-acre park that was dedicated. was dedicated as part of Southgate Third Edition. This is a closer plan view of what the developers' engineer had submitted. You can see that there's about 26 stairs that are going to be required because of topography, and then there's a five-foot sidewalk that continues with access into Chelsea Court. This is a side profile showing the number of stairs with a railing in the center. And then I thought I'd provide a couple of distances coming from this intersection. I've got a route highlighted in purple here that ends up being about .2 miles long, if you were to walk the sidewalk and then access that corner of the park. If you were to come from this intersection and walk down the pedestrian pathway through Chelsea Court, through Granville, and through that corner of the park, ends up being about .15 miles. And so it's a, you know, fairly slight reduction in distance for using the pedestrian path. Once you get to a portion of Castleford, it will become, I guess, less dependent. You'll end up being closer to the park and end up going to the east in order to access the park instead of coming back to the pedestrian easement in Chelsea Court in order to access that portion of the property. So, you know, you'd have a slight advantage for a certain amount of properties, but they'd be pretty few for that. So with that, I would note the Transportation Commission had reviewed this January 12, 2017, and the commission recommended denial of the request, and staff's recommendation for you today is to receive the waiver request and provide a recommendation to city council or provide us further direction, and I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Mike, in the packet, if you, you probably have that, but there's a schematic of the, a design of the Chelsea Court and where this pathway would be, and that there's maybe on the right-hand side there between those lots, is that another pathway or a sidewalk or something that goes
Through here?
Right there, yeah.
That would just be a utility easement that goes through here.
So there's not a
Not another path, no.
Yeah.
Stolen in a sanitary sewer through.
Yeah.
As a reason that we're, we want the stairs and the pathways in our to ease getting to the park, is that
Yeah, that was the underlying reason of the initial approval. Anytime you have these cul-de-sacs, which we don't like to use, but with the topography of the Palouse, oftentimes you're, you have to deal with cul-de-sacs, and so it's an opportunity to provide more of a pedestrian connection, and so, you know, obviously Flomer and Lundquist lanes, if you were to go down into the county, you'd have to go all the way down to State Highway 8. What would eventually be Ridgeview Second Edition, you'll end up going Notting Hill, but you'd have to go all the way around. It's more of a direct route to access some of these amenities throughout the subdivision, and to provide a walkable route to those amenities.
The difference between the, not to interrupt, but the difference between the two routes, the one that follows the sidewalk around, which would be ADA accessible, right, and the one that goes down the stairs, which would not, is something like
Yeah, I've got .2 and then .15, and I had just taken it, you know, from this intersection just to give an example of how much time it would save. You know, the majority, since the
By hundreds of a mile?
Yeah, so it's not substantial by any means. So, you know, with the waiving of this pathway, all this, at least all the homes in this area would be directed to this intersection, and so that would just give you kind of an idea of how much distance it would save, which, like I mentioned before, isn't very much.
Yeah, I've got kind of a problem with the idea that the stairs are, who's gonna shovel the stairs in the wintertime? Are they gonna be dangerous? Are they a liability? And they're not ADA accessible anyway?
Yeah, typically Parks and Rec Department would be responsible for those, but those would be really low on their priority list, and it becomes a challenge in the wintertime when there's snow on them to maintain them, so.
And they would, they would not at any point be accessible for wheelchairs, crutches, canes?
Yeah, nope. Unless you put a series of switchbacks, but
If you're good on crutches or you have, you're fairly ambulatory maybe a cane. Walter?
I've been involved in two of these. First one was in Frontier Two subdivision back in 1990. It went from Shetland Court up to Ridge Road. I lived in that area and actually have been known to use it. The second one was Panorama Drive with a stairway down to the Trinity Church area in Fairview. I live in that area. I use that one, and so does the neighborhood. People go up and down these things. I understand the contractor wants to save the money because they're not horribly cheap. They're not horribly expensive either, but they are expensive, but they do get used. I can't answer what the snow removal is on either one of those right now. I haven't looked, but a lot of the sidewalks are problematical anywhere, you know, around town. If you don't get it off the moment it falls, turns to ice, and you can't get it off. So I guess I'm not in favor of voting for deleting that. We've given relief on the red one up there in that area already. The original council decision for four of them was thought through and decided upon, so I guess I've just, I've got a problem with not keeping that particular one in there. It's not the longest sidewalk in the, I mean, stair in the world. The one off of Panorama is, just by looking at it, is over two times as long, probably. It's a pretty good, it's a pretty good stair. They work, and the neighborhoods use them. The Shetland Court one is useful, people go to the university up over the top. And like I say, I was involved when we were told we needed to put that in, and I said, "What? We don't need a stair up there." But we did put it in, and it gets used, so that's kind of where I am.
Mr. McDonald?
Thank you. Just to speak a little bit to the maintenance side, typically, as Mike indicated, these are maintained by the Parks Department. Generally speaking and looking at past practice, when the weather conditions get a little more severe, winters like this certainly, but even some that aren't quite this severe, it's not uncommon for the Parks Department to just close those, because maintenance of them obviously
Barricade them.
Yeah, to barricade them off for a period of time, until the weather is a little more conducive to having them maintain it open. So it's not uncommon for that to happen in winter conditions.
So if I'm not, so we don't have somebody out there with a snow blower or shovel or DI sir or anything, fighting to keep them open?
They will keep them open, as I understand it, you know, as long as the weather's not too bad, and it's a little easier certainly on the flat ones. You know, for instance, like going over to Lundquist, those are a little simpler, but once you get into the stairs, it's a little different matter in terms of trying to keep them open, so those are the ones that would tend to close, those that have stairs.
John?
Do you know how much the existing two stairways are used as we speak? Do we have any information on that? The ones
You're referring to these?
The two green ones?
The two green ones.
The two in the green, are they
There's no occupied houses on that cul-de-sac yet.
Yeah, that, yeah, there's, we have a couple of building permits. I think maybe one or two has been constructed, but it's largely undeveloped. They had just put the infrastructure in this last year, and so it's yet to be determined the amount of traffic that goes on there.
And I've driven up there and looked around, but I can't tell you how much the people out from the county subdivision come into town, but on the other hand, the park's not really open yet either, so.
Well, Walter, if I may, now I'm talking like him.
Polite people.
I kind of agree with you, but I do have concerns on the other side, namely the fact that during any sort of a winter, for anywhere from three to five months, those steps could be closed, you know, barricaded off because Parks and Rec said, you know, cleaning the pathway is one thing, but cleaning the stairs is another, and which cuts down the usage, and we have no idea the usage that the ones that we have already installed are going to get. So we've got the same concern, but we're kind of on opposite sides, and that's
Well, I'm just saying that where I have seen them built, where I have built them, they are used.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the usage has to do with the population and the destination on the other end of them. In this particular case, the thing that makes me want to allow the exemption is that it's so much, it doesn't save you hardly any time to go down this stairway to get to the park. You can go around, and if you're handicapped in any way, you have to go around anyway. So certainly, certainly, you're welcome. Come up to the, come up to the, identify yourself.
Mike Salisbury, 2315 Shelby Lane. I can speak to your question about use. May I borrow this?
Sure.
This one here, the property owner that lives right here has this tall privacy fence going from right here all the way along to here. So this path can't be used unless you're here and you want to go over here and look at the view, turn around and go back. This one does get used by these, I don't know where they live, but I've seen people use this one. I'm up here every day. So just to answer that question.
Thank you. But Mike, if I may, the people that live on whatever that North Street is, Flomer, which one?
Lundquist.
Lundquist. If they wanted to prevail upon the owner of that fence for it to be opened up to be able to get through there, they could certainly do that. I mean, that pathway's only been in a few months, or
It's been over a year.
Over a year? Okay.
Are you asking if the neighbors got together and insisted that they had
Well, I talked to the, I talked to him. We would really like to be able to get to that path and work it out with him. You don't have the same problem down on the stairs in question. It's not going to be barricaded by
I was just answering his question.
Yeah, right, I understand.
But to answer your question, he is, he built that fence because he knew I was building the subdivision, and he has sort of landscaped that street right-of-way, and he does not want people walking through his front yard. So to say, could the neighbors work together with him? I don't know. It's possible.
Yeah, I, I'm not here to belabor the point. Is that a county road? I know it's not city.
It's a road.
So I presume putting the fence across it may or may not be his prerogative. He did extend it, according to your information or what you're saying, he extended it south down along the neighbor's property as well, apparently.
Well, maybe they worked together, I don't know, but the fence seems to look the same all the way.
Yeah, yeah, that's Connie Ferguson's house. It's, that's the southernmost of the two. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
One last point, if I may. The stairs in Shetland Court Frontier Two, my belief is, are used primarily to go to work or school at the college. The ones on Panorama to Fairview are used as an exercise path. People that go out and walk, they don't use it to get to church hardly much, and they don't use it to come out to Good Sam Village or anything. They use it to walk the dogs and to exercise, and it's a, it's a, it's a neighborhood path is what it's become. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess where we are in this is, I'm kind of coming down on the side of allowing the exemption, and that's the recommendation I would make, but I, you know, we need to forward it on to council for full consideration, but it seems to me for the amount of, the amount of extra time that you're going to save by using this stairway that it's not really in the community's best interest to force developers to put a bunch of extra expense into something like that that doesn't really save anybody any time.
So would the committee like to make a recommendation to the council or forward on without?
I guess we're two to one in favor of allowing the exemption, then.
Yeah. And Mike, if you would, in the packet item for the council, I don't believe it was included today, the transportation has discussed this and recommended against it.
Oh, include the draft minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
All right, the next item is the amendment that was added to the agenda for today, a request for assignment of Cardinal GS Stormwater Utility Study Agreement to Aspect Consulting, and Kevin's gonna tell us about that change.
Yeah, we had kind of an odd situation back in May. We completed a process and selected Cardinal GS to help us with our stormwater utility. And to make a long story short, we got an agreement with them in November that they, as a company, decided to change their client base and only do work for the federal government. So we have a, an existing agreement with that group. They decided they didn't want to do that kind of work anymore for municipalities. The team that we selected to do the work that were employed by Cardinal at the time as a group at that point decided they wanted to leave Cardinal. They were offered employment by Aspect Consulting, which is a reputable firm of hydrologists, hydrogeologists, generally environmental science folks, 85 people. They have five offices. They have an office in Yakima. The group that we had selected to help us went, as a whole, to Aspect Consulting. We were, received a note or a notice from Cardinal that we had the choice of transferring or reassigning that agreement to Aspect Consulting, or keeping it in place as is, and Cardinal would subcontract with those folks through Aspect Consulting, or we could just throw out the whole thing and go find another consultant. So at no additional cost to us, for the same folks to do the work, the request before you is to agree to the reassignment of that contract from Cardinal to Aspect.
And nothing in the original agreement would change? It would just basically a different contractor, and maybe some of the same people would be involved?
All of the same people, other than clerical staff. So all of the
And maybe some of them?
Technocrats that we, yeah, possibly. So the only difference to the city would, when we wrote the check out to pay, we would write the check to a different
Aspect, Aspect Consulting.
They've, they're already, excuse me, $30,000 into the contract. That contract was for 119. We're going to likely have another contract. This was phase one contract. We're likely going to have a phase two with them for an additional approximately $100,000. In my opinion, there'd be no need to keep Cardinal in the mix, just adding another layer of paper pushing.
Your RFQ allowed an expansion of the contract if you're, if you're, if you wanted to do so?
Expansion?
To the additional $100,000?
Oh, no, we originally requested a scope of work for the entire project. That happened to be unaffordable with the current budget, so we cut it off and said, "What can we do to maintain progress?", assuming that we can get additional funds down the road when we need them.
But you won't have to go out again
No.
With an RFQ?
Right.
The one you did encompassed
Absolutely.
The greater scope of work?
The entire scope.
Okay.
At the, at the bottom in the action portion of this At the, at the bottom in the action portion of this agenda item, there's something about Aspect Consulting with a markup of 3.5% added for administration. Is that in addition, they're asking that in order to transfer this over?
No, what they would do is if Cardinal had to subcontract it, they would put the 3% to 5% for their processing onto Aspect, basically saying, "Fine, we're going to let you subcontract this, but we're going to take a small piece of the pie."
Jim, that is an oar. There are two oars in here after the recommended, after the recommended selection of the three. Well, it's, yeah, so that's a third choice is what that one is. I don't have any problem with doing this. It looks like a...
I don't either.
Okay, I did have some questions about the document that's been proposed to be used to make this change, and I presume that staff's going to take a look at that, and it will either change or not when it comes to council. So I'm okay, I'm okay with the proposal.
Okay, I guess I am too. I think we should, oh, we've got a legal opinion coming up here though.
Well, no, there was discussion about some of the language, trying to make sure that the process, who said what, or who initiated this flows better in the document. I provided Les with, just a change of line, I mean, Kevin. I apologize, Les.
To both of you.
And it's just basically, and if you look in your packet on page 96, under the assignment, or assignment and assumption of consulting services agreement and consent, under agreement about two-thirds of the way down on number one, basically just to make a flow of how things really happened on number one, it would change on the assignment of agreement to read, "As of the effective date, city hereby expressly consents to consultant transferring, assigning, and conveying this agreement to Asseny rather than the city transferring it." It was the consultant's request to transfer it, so it just reads a little more clearly. And then on page 97 of the packet, the next page, under number three, the consent to the assignment, it currently reads, "Consultant hereby consents to the city's conveyance." We would change it to that the city hereby consents to consultant's conveyance. And everything else...
The original document calls for the, if I may, for the contractor to be able to assign it, but only with the consent of the city. So what I questioned was, who's assigning it here? And apparently Rob has agreed that the consultant is the one that's doing the assigning, and we're agreeing to it, so...
And we'll make those changes, and it'll be in the packet before it goes to, shouldn't have any effect on you if the council decides to go with the assignment.
Okay. Thank you, Rod.
So those changes that recommended go regular agenda?
Yeah, I would say, put it on, everyone needs to see that.
No surprises.
Yeah, in the interest of transparency. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, that's the end of the regular and amended agenda for today, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.